... meeting for July fifteenth, twenty twenty five. Is there by called to order? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero.
Here.
Alderwoman Garza.
Here.
Alderman Masiacos.
Present.
Alderman Nunez.
Here.
Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Seville.
Here.
Alderman Manuelos.
Here.
Alderwoman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Bog.
Here.
Alderwoman Bade.
Here.
Alderman Larson.
Here.
Alderman White.
Here.
Mayor Lash is present.
Uh, first agenda item approval of the minutes of Tuesday, July first, twenty twenty five. Committee of the whole meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for Tuesday, July first, twenty twenty five? Committee of the whole meeting. The motion was made by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Garza. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries by voice vote. Uh, the mayor's report. Uh, first up, John Z. Hit it.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Great to see everybody here with us today. Uh, joyous occasion to kick off today's meeting. It's a beautiful month, right? July, very nice weather out here in Aurora in the Chicagoland area. So what better month than to have National Parks and Recreation Month? It's a beautiful time to honor them. And let's give it up for our Parks and Recreation staff or Public Facility staff. For all the hard work they do here in Aurora, we're going to invite the mayor to come on down and offer up a proclamation for National Parks and Recreation Month. We'll also invite up Public Facility staff to come up and join the mayor and accept the proclamation and offer up a few words about what it means. We're going to have Steve Coliza, our superintendent of Parks and Rec up here. And Mayor?
Hop on up, alright?
They sent you.
Okay, declaring National Parks and Recreation Month for July of twenty twenty five. Whereas, uh, parks and recreation programs are an integral part of the communities across the United States, including Aurora, and play a vital role in promoting active and healthy lifestyles, improving mental well-being, and fostering a sense of community. Whereas, the National Recreation and Park Association designates July as National Parks and Recreation Month, highlighting the essential services provided by parks and recreation programs and the dedicated professionals who manage and maintain them. Whereas, parks and recreation facilities provide safe spaces for children and families to play, exercise, explore, helping to build stronger, healthier, and more connected communities. And whereas, the City of Aurora recognizes the importance of engaging the public in the planning, management, enjoyment of parks and recreational activities to ensure these resources meet the diverse needs and interests of our community. And whereas, this month provides an opportunity to celebrate our hardworking City of Aurora Parks and Rec Division and staff, and to thank them for their year-round work in maintaining our parks and enhancing opportunities for residents and visitors to enjoy them. Now therefore, I, Mayor John Lash, do hereby proclaim July as National Parks and Rec Month in the City of Aurora, Illinois, encouraging all residents to explore and enjoy our local parks. And I just want to say thanks if you'll please extend this to all of our city employees that are working hard to keep our parks, uh, clean, safe, and open to the public. So.
All right, I'd like to say a couple of things about parks and recreation and how important it is to the, uh, to the residents, to the public. Um, something that I get to witness on a daily basis is people out in the parks. You hear laughter, you see kids running around, you see families having a great time, enjoying themselves. And then, uh, as the staff does a great job throughout every single park here in the city, um, they sit there and they do work. They pick up litter, pick up garbage, create new spaces for people to enjoy, and try to get them to really see our impact that we have on the community and the things that we can provide for the people. So it's a very special job. It's a very rewarding job. And it's something that, uh, is very special to me and special to all the people down at the shop. And we take a lot of pride in everything that we do. And the best part about it is, like I said, going outside, seeing people enjoy it, hearing laughter, and just creating, giving people a spot to really enjoy. So, uh, that's why Parks and Recreation is very special to me. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Steve. That's again Steve Coliza, our superintendent of Parks and Recreation here at the City of Aurora, part of our Public Facilities Department. Thank you, Mayor Lash. Couple of other quick announcements. Wednesday's at the Plaza continue here in downtown Aurora. Uh, each week, each Wednesday night for the next about a month now, we're going to have live music in the plaza. It's free, uh, six to nine P M. So be sure to come and check it out. Really fun time and something fun to do, especially during the weekdays here in downtown. Additionally, this Friday, Summer Food Truck Fest comes. It's the first ever Summer Food Truck Fest here in the City of Aurora. Right now, we have over thirty-five food trucks. They're going to be lining up right here in downtown Friday night, five to nine P M. That's a really good event put on by our Community Events Division. They do one in the fall, they do one in the spring. And now due to popular demand, there's one coming here this summer, and it's sure to be a treat. So be sure to come on out. Uh, there're going to be thousands of people lining the streets here in downtown. It's always a great sight to see, and we're excited for it this Friday. So come on out and enjoy the fun here in downtown Aurora. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And next is, uh, as part of the mayor's report, uh, Jason Bauer, uh, with Public Works. Uh, public notice is going to be going out to the public here very shortly about our lead. And I know that our three-one-one call center is prepped with all the right information. We want to make sure that the aldermen, uh, would know what's coming. So I'll let you queue up the slides and have at it.
Good afternoon, Jason Bauer with the Department of Public Works. Uh, as the mayor alluded to, um, we had a press release yesterday. It was distributed via various, uh, news sources, and there's going to be even more today. Um, we've had some visits from a couple of the different news outlets, uh, that wanted to get a little bit more information. And basically, what this is in reference to is some of the new testing standards for twenty twenty-five. When I was here talking about water rates, I did bring this up very briefly. It wasn't really the focus of that report. But in speaking with the mayor, we wanted to make sure that we brought forth everything about these new standards and exactly what these standards mean and what that press release was all about. So, big picture, what are we testing for at the plant? There's, there's lots of things we test for at the plant to make sure that the water is compliant. One of the things that we can't test for is lead, because the water that leaves the plant, there's no lead in it. So that's, that's the first thing to take away. The water in the plant, as we treat it, it is up to standard. There's no lead in the system. There's no lead in the water main. Where lead gets into the system is in the service lines. Basically, once it leaves the water main and it enters a service line all the way up to the faucet, there's various ways that lead can get into the water. So we test that at the homes. Historically, we've done it a little differently than we did in twenty twenty-five. So, lead comes from everywhere. It's not just in the water. So, lead is very dangerous to younger children and to pregnant women. So it can cause behavioral issues, learning difficulties. There's, there's various things that basically have, the research is there that it's not good to have elevated lead in the blood. It's not just in the water, it's in the soil, it's in, I mean, it's a natural occurring element, so it's all around us. It's in paint. We all, we've all heard stories about, you know, lead paint chips and things like that, and the danger of having lead in the home. But it's all over the place. It's outside, it's in the soil that we're walking on. It's everywhere that we're exposed to it. The one thing that we can control is how exposed people are in their drinking water. So I did talk about this very briefly. We've had a change in how we tested. So before, we were on what's known as reduced monitoring. So we were only testing every three years, and we were testing fifty homes. So we had a list of homes, we would test those fifty homes, and we would look at those results. And we've always been compliant. We've always been within regulations. In the last few years, we've been doing that annually. So we stopped doing it every three years. We amped that up, basic, per the direction of the EPA. So we amped that up, and we were doing it annually, again, fifty. So, in twenty twenty-five, we've now done our first round of one hundred samples, and that was just from January to June. So, we were on standard, or we're now moving over to standard testing. We're not on reduced monitoring anymore. And the reason for that is they want to do a full analysis of everyone and see where they're at in terms of the action level. The other thing that's changed is we used to just test that first liter of water. So basically, that first liter of water is testing what's really close to the sink or whatever faucet is being, the water's being drawn from. This go-around, we're now testing the fifth liter. The fifth liter is more representative of what's been sitting in that lead service line for at least six hours. So generally, the people that are in the test program, they know how it works. They don't use water after a certain time at night, and they're instructed on how to take those samples the following morning. But now they're doing the fifth liter, not the first. So they take the first four liters, they dump. The fifth liter is the one that we collect, and we have sent off to a lab to get tested for lead. There's also a mandatory sampling of twenty percent of schools and daycares. That's another new regulation for this year. So, went over standard versus reduced monitoring. So we're now on standard monitoring. It's not just the City of Aurora, it's every, everyone in Illinois. So basically, you're going to be do, you're going to be on standard monitoring until such time that you've either, that you're under the action level or you've done something to reduce the corrosivity of the water, and then you can get back to reduced monitoring. And again, went over the sampling location. We are now doing the fifth liter, not the first, and then the schools and daycares. So this, I think, is a pretty good graphic that sums up what I was talking about, where those testing locations are. So if you look at the graphic, you can see the water main. It's out in the road underneath the car. So we know that that water is lead-free. Now, from the water main into the home, that's going to be the lead service line, if it's a house that has a lead service line. The bulk of ours are, you know, two-thirds are copper or some other material. But anything that's going to have lead, we're going to be taking that sample where that yellow dot is now. So we're sampling the water that's been sitting in the lead for six hours versus something that might be sitting in your, you might have copper plumbing inside, even though you have a lead service, it's sitting in a copper line. There could still be lead solder, there could still be lead in those fixtures. So there could still be lead that pops up in a first-liter sample. But what we're testing for is really what's under our control, what we can do as the water utility in terms of the water lines themselves. So, replacing the lead service lines is the only thing that's within the purview of the water utility. And that's where the directive is, is for the water utilities to replace those. In the state of Illinois, we've got thirty-three years, starting in twenty twenty-seven. There are other federal mandates out there that might change that. But that's the only part that we can control. So when we go in and we replace it, we're replacing from that water main all the way to the meter, through the foundation, wherever the existing meter was, however we need to get over to it. So what are those numbers? What are we looking for? So, this, the common language is, there's no safe level of lead, but there still needs to be a number that we have to look at. And that action level is fifteen parts per billion. Copper is less than that, copper's never been an issue. And what we're looking for, I'd say, I think I said before, we take a hundred samples, or that's what we did this time. So we're going to rank those from the least amount of lead to the most amount of lead. And we're going to go backwards to find that ninetieth sample. And we're going to compare that to the action level. So if we're over the action level, it's not in compliance. If we're under the action level, it's just like it's been in years past. However, we knew since we were going to be sampling from basically the, the water that's been sitting in the lead, we were expecting the numbers to go up, and they did. So here's historically where our first-liter samples have been up through twenty twenty-four, and then where we were this year for our fifth-liter sample, ninetieth percentile, twenty point six. So we were in excess of the fifteen parts per billion. That's what triggered the public notice that went out via the news media. And this is not just specific to the City of Aurora. This is everyone in the state of Illinois. There's more and more reports coming out. Everyone was on the same testing cycle that we were. Everyone's reporting their first six months. Everyone has a different type of notification they have to give, but due to the size of our community, ours had to be through the news media. So we're over the fifteen parts per billion, but there's a lot of good news, too. Um, eighty-one of them, eighty-one of those samples were under. So we had nineteen that failed. And thirty-three of the samples, they have the same lead service line as their neighbor. Their neighbor may have failed the test, but we had thirty-three that we couldn't even detect lead in the water. It was below the threshold of what the laboratories can even test for. So it just shows how wide of a range you're looking at in terms of what can cause it, what can't cause it. You know, maybe one line's put in differently, maybe one's a little older, maybe it was a different lead manufacturer, the pipe came from somewhere else. We don't really know. But it's, there's no notable, noticeable patterns. We're not sure what would cause one to fail and one to pass. But this is the criteria. We're looking for that fifteen parts per billion and to be underneath that level. But we're not just sitting by. I think all of you have seen me up here before, talking about lead in one form or another. We talk about water main replacement projects. We're replacing this many services with this project. We're replacing lead services with maintenance. We're not mandated to replace anything until twenty twenty-seven, but the City of Aurora, way back in twenty eighteen, when we instituted our first replacement policy, we've been replacing lead service lines at no cost to the residents. So we're going from the meter all the way out to the main on water main projects, on sewer separation projects, on s, any project where we disturb that lead line. If it's a leaking line, if the, if the shut-off is leaking out in the front yard, we don't even bother trying to fix it. We just put in a brand-new copper line. So we've done about twenty-five-hundred of these since twenty eighteen, and we've been mandated to do zero. That, the mandate starts in twenty twenty-seven. The only mandate right now is that you can't do a partial replacement. So we can't go in and start cutting pieces out when we're doing all those different projects. We have to replace them in their entirety. We haven't let that slow down our capital improvement projects. We know we've got lots of sewer separation to do. We've got water mains to put in. So we're still doing them, to the tune, again, of about four hundred per year. That's going to change next year, since we've exceeded the action level. Instead of being mandated to do those replacements starting in twenty twenty-seven, we're going to be starting that in twenty twenty-six. So next year, um, one of the things we talked about during the water rates is that we are set, we are ready to go. We thought this might be coming, and we set that budget to be able to hit that three percent next year. So some of the other things we've got going on in addition to the lead service line replacement is we are doing a corrosion control study. So, right now, we control corrosion by controlling the pH of the water. There are other water utilities that have to put in a different additive that addresses corrosion. It basically reduces the corrosivity of the water, which is going to lessen the impact that it has with that lead service line while it's sitting there. We've been, we started this about two years ago, and this is a picture of what we've got set up in the water treatment plant. All those different racks that you see are actual lead service lines that we harvested from the system when we were doing lead service line replacements. And we're dosing them at different rates of a chemical to see if it's reducing how much lead we sample when we take those samples. So far, the results have been very positive. And again, this is a common chemical that's used in other water treatment plants, and this is something that the I E P A asked us to do, again, about two years ago. And that study is underway, and we expect the results to come in about sometime next year. It'll be a very, it's not a very expensive modification at the plant, so we'll very easily be able to add that dosing to the water. One of the things that we brought up, um, a couple of different times is the lead service line replacements. Again, about twenty-five-hundred since twenty eighteen, and we've been mandated to replace zero. So we are being very active. We're up close to nineteen thousand. We're already down to, by the end of this year, we'll be under sixteen thousand. So we aren't just sitting by waiting. We're doing as much as we possibly can with the funds that are available to us. We've been fortunate to get a lot of, uh, revolving loan funds with zero percent, um, with principal forgiveness, excuse me. So we've gotten a lot of that money, and we've been putting that towards these projects. We've got another one that's going to be starting here in the next month or so. We have great information online. We've got our lead service line replacement map, uh, probably shown this graphic a few different times. If there's a resident that's concerned, they can go onto the website. We've got, there's various different ways you can get to this from our city, from the city website. And it basically will show you where we think the lead services lines are based on construction records, historical records, maintenance records. We've got a, a whole laundry list of things that we use to come up with this list. And anything that's going to be a black dot or a colored dot might have lead in it, and might be fully lead, might be partially lead. Back, you know, prior to twenty eighteen, if we did a water main replacement, we would replace half of it up to the curb stop, nothing going into the home. So those might be a different colored dot to represent a different type of material from the, the water main to the shut-off, and then from the shut-off all the way into the house to the meter. So all this information is there, and there's great information on there, too. If a resident wants to pull this up and look and see what's in their home, and maybe they disagree, maybe we're showing that it's lead, but they can clearly see right at the meter, or there's some nice shiny copper that they'd like us to come out. There's ways to get ahold of us. We can send a crew out. We can start evaluating and, and update the inventory in that way, too. So, touched on this really briefly. Exceeding that action level required this notification. And again, due to our size, we had to go through the news media. We were notified yesterday morning. So yesterday morning, that's when we started just, uh, distributing everything to our different news outlets. And that's where the reports were coming out yesterday, and again, there'll be more today. And that, again, we had a twenty-four-hour turnaround time for that, and the only approved method that we had was to go through the news. There's not enough time for mailers or anything like that. Another component is going to be pu, public education. We're already working with the I E P A on exactly what that's going to contain. We've sent that down to them. They are reviewing it to make sure it's okay for distribution, and then they're going to tell us exactly how and when they want that distributed. The good news is, is all that is on our website already. Everything that they asked for, we've already got. It's out there. It's readily available to the public in, on, again, various different spots on, on the website. Again, we're not alone. This is, every community is going through this. Anyone with lead service lines is going through this. And we're not just sitting by. We've got the corrosion control. We're replacing lead services, and we won't stop that until all sixteen thousand remaining are completes, completed. Um, the public education is coming out. There's, again, a lot of great information on our website. We worked very closely with I T for those interactive maps. The service replacements are updated every single day. I think it's midnight it's going to update. And so that number that I think on the previous slide said a hundred and ninety-one, it's probably more than that now, because I made this slideshow last week. So it's updated every day. Um, we're doing all the notification and communication with the residents that are affected. Again, we had nineteen that failed out of the hundred we tested now. Well, we're going to need nineteen new ones to replace that, because as soon as those exceeded the action limit, they got put right into the replacement program, and we've already been working on those. So we've already replaced quite a few of those. Again, we didn't finish the testing until maybe within the last month. So they might not all be done, but within the next month, they're all going to be taken care of, too. So there's lots of ways that the city is actively attacking this issue. And, you know, and unless there's a, a magic pot of money that's going to show up tomorrow and we, we can replace sixteen thousand, we're going to keep going in the same way that we have been and, and just kind of keep plugging forward and do the best we can. So certainly, I'm sure there's questions, and I'm more than willing to take any.
Questions from the aldermen. Alderman Masiacos.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a point of clarification, especially for our residents listening in. You mentioned, uh, chemical and dosing.
Mm-hmm.
Can you really talk, talk a little bit about the type of chemicals we use? So there's no panic out there about?
Oh, yeah. No. Um, so the chemical we'd be looking to add would be phosphoric acid. You have a recommended daily allowance of that in, you know, per, per the USDA, or whoever comes up with those R D A numbers. Yeah. You need phosphorus in your system. Um, the amount we're talking of dosing would be probably less than one percent of what your recommended daily allowance is. So if you're short on phosphorus, you know, we might be helping you out. And there's, uh, if you think of a can of Coke, a can of Pepsi, there's way more phosphoric acid in that product than there is in what we'd be putting in. And it is an, an EPA-approved product. There are, there are numerous water utilities that use it. They use it to control the pH. We haven't had to do that. We've got, um, our, we've been controlling corrosivity just with our treatment alone without adding chemicals. So, again, it's an approved method, and the reason we're looking at it is to find, you know, how much do we need to add so that we're not, we don't want to change the taste of the water, or, you know, or anything like that. But again, it's in water treatment systems throughout the state, throughout the country.
Yeah, all right. Thank you so much for that explanation.
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor.
Alderwoman Smith?
Two questions for you, Jason. First, thank you for this, um, thorough presentation. Um, my first question is, are there certain areas in the city where we're finding this, um, lead service lines to be more prevalent? Is it more older part, newer part, east side, west side, or, or is it just everywhere?
Yeah, if you look on the map, you'll see.
I was trying to, and you moved it too quickly.
Okay, yeah, sure. If you look at the map, you're going to see more of the, of the, the, the black dots that represent lead or, or some of the other colors that have a, a portion of lead. Everything that's green on there is going to be the newer areas. So, we basically, we know that at some time in the late seventies, the city stopped allowing lead, and we switched to copper. So we just put a cutoff point of nineteen eighty as our cutoff point. So, uh, basically, if anything was prior to nineteen eighty, it's either going to be suspected lead or we're verifying that by going on-site and doing a service call. So it's going to be the older part of town.
And my second question to you would be, is there something that your department could put together, um, for all of us, a statement? Because we're going to start getting emails on this, that would basically cover what you just said in, in a simple format that we could just cut and paste and send to our residents, because we are going to, we, we all need to be sending the same message. Um, and I think it would be really good if the message was actually coming from you guys. It would be accurate, and we'd all be sending the same information out to our residents.
Definitely. It's something, um, we've been working on with Rich to get that all set for everyone, to make sure that you have all this information and, and, and good, a good way to get out websites and things like that, for sure.
Yes, yeah. But again, I think it's really important for us all to be sending the same message.
Yes, yeah, and that would come from us.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
And the Communications Department has done a pretty good job updating and working with you, both on the presentation and the communication that's gone out to the public as well as updating the website. So right now, the websites are central location, but we can send some over to the office.
And we have been working on a document just like that, and we have been working with Communications on that.
But just, just to reiterate, that's all great, and people will go there, but we're going to start getting emails individually.
I'm sorry, yeah. Yeah, we've been working with Communications on that document to give to everyone up here. And we've also been working on, uh, the consultant that's working on the corrosion study with us, they're putting together a nice F A Q sheet that we can, um, distribute to you all as well.
Great, thank you.
Alderman Barrero?
Yes, uh, I have a, a question, uh, with respect to, uh, filters and, and the pitchers that you guys offered, and also the testing. Is there a cost to that, and how do residents go about, uh, getting those?
Yeah, so we do not test for lead. Um, what we, if people are concerned, they can contact us. We can give them the name of some of the laboratories. It's a very inexpensive test. I think they range anywhere from forty to fifty dollars. There's one that's in Naperville. There's another one that's in Indiana. Um, we have to ship all our lead tests out. We don't do that in-house. So we can't offer that to residents specifically, but if they reach out, again, there's, there's, those are some of the F A Qs that we have that would be on that sheet that you'd be able to hand out, and it would let them know, you know, where those labs are, how they can get that tested. And then if results come back elevated, then, you know, then they would contact engineering. There's, we'd have specific emails set up just for this that go out to a number of the engineers so that it doesn't just sit there. If someone's on vacation, it's something that'd be addressed, and someone would get back pretty quickly. Oh, and as far as, yeah, the pitchers, so the only pitchers we distribute now are when we're doing a project and we're going to be impacting someone's lead service. So if we're going to be doing a water main project, we're going to let those people know well and ahead of time that it's coming. We're going to let them know that they have a suspected lead service line, that we're going to let them know we're going to be replacing it. We're also going to let them know that we're going to be impacting it, and we give them a lead pitcher to use. And they come, we give, um, six months' worth of pitch, of filters with it. It's very inexpensive. So if anyone is concerned and, you know, they're not in, within a project or anything like that, there's a number of ways that you can mitigate, and, you know, any risks. We have a lot of that information on the website as well. But yeah, I mean, we recommend just making sure that if somebody does want to get a pitcher, that they make sure that it specifies that it's for lead.
What's the cost of those?
Number that don't.
Like, what do the, what do they cost?
Um, they're not ver, I think a pitcher with six months of filters would probably be, I mean, we pay less because we buy so many of them, because we're doing, we're handing out five hundred a year. Um, but I would think, you know, the Home Depots and whatnot, you're probably not looking more than twenty-five, fifty dollars. And, and that would be with six months of, of filtration. And there's other ways that people can lower their risk, too. One of the things that we recommend on the website is, you know, maybe instead of making a pot of coffee first thing in the morning, maybe you turn your wash machine on. Maybe you take your shower first. Let the water run for a minute or so until, you know, maybe it feels cold. There's a lot of great information on there about how you can mitigate risk.
One other quick question I had. Everybody in the City of Aurora is getting a notification, even if they live in one of the newer parts that has copper from day one?
Uh, well, this is, the, the notification that went out, per the I E P A, was through the news media. Now, we've posted things on the website. We've got a landing page for all that. We've been circulating it via our social media. But to satisfy this public notice, it's just been, uh, what was announced in the last few days, um, on, on the news.
So the, all the people that are representing the wards with the bright green on them can pretty much tell their residents that they don't have to be concerned?
Or if they are concerned, to, to reach out to us, and we'll go and make sure that they are indeed free and clear. But yeah, if, if it's a green dot, we didn't turn, anything that we have that's green is based on good records. If we were even on the fence about whether it might concern, might be lead, or we were concerned that maybe it would be lead, we just considered those lead. I mean, we, we took the most conservative approach possible. Um, so maybe we don't have sixteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-four, or one fifty-two, whatever that number was. We might have something less than that, but we don't want to assume that. We want to be on the conservative side. So at least when we get to that point, we can go in and we can check, and we can even, if need be, do some exploratory digging out in the road. We can do that at that point in time, but we wanted to make sure we weren't going to miss anybody. So anything that was a gray area, we just turned that black.
Alderman Smith?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, from my understanding, that we've been so out front on this, that the authorities have really enjoyed working with us, and... and, and because other communities are not as cooperative. And as far along as we are in our progressive stance to address the lead lines, is that a fair statement?
Yeah, actually, I mean, during the development of the legislation, we were in talks constantly with the E P A, a bunch of other groups. I'm personally on the Lead Service Line Advisory Board that was established as a part of this public act. The City of Aurora, given our size, we were allowed a representative. I was appointed at that time to represent the city. But even prior to that, we were working with the I E P A to talk about the issues and to talk about the difficulties. And that's how a lot of these numbers and figures were settled upon. You know, the 33 years and, you know, Chicago gets, I think, 50 years. And people that might only have 100 lead service lines, they don't have 33 years. They've got five years, you know. So we, there was a lot of back and forth. It was a great group of people that were involved in those discussions. And we meet twice a year to, to go over everything that's happening. And, and again, that's all part of that same legislation that was passed in January. Well, it was enacted in January of 2022. I think it passed sometime a couple of months prior to that. But yes, yeah, the I E P A has been great to work with. They're very receptive to our ideas and they've, yeah, I, I think they appreciate that we're being very proactive and we're not just sitting and waiting until someone says, okay, you know, it's 2027, go start.
Yeah, well, I thank you for that. And I think our constituents want to thank you as well. They want us to be proactive too.
Yes, well, thank you to the council for, you know, when we brought forth that, that program. It was all voted favorably upon.
Good. And then secondarily, there's a sewer project in my ward in the Bow Ridge area. I think it's $3.2 million. We're not doing anything with the lead service lines in there at this time, is that correct?
No, we will. If there's, again, as, as a part of our capital improvement program, any lead service line that gets disrupted, that, that's what kind of takes that number from maybe 150 a year up to that 400 or 500 a year. Because if we're going through with a deep sewer, we're going to be encountering lines. We can't just bend them out of the way and rehook them back. As soon as you disturb it, you're disturbing that scale that's built up on the inside of the pipe. And as soon as that starts flaking off or you disturb it, you bend the pipe, you're going to, there's a very good chance that you're going to increase the lead that's going to be in that pipe for the next six months, 12 months. So that's no longer allowed. So if we've got a sewer separation project, those are some of the 500 that we might replace this year because we will be taking care of those as we cross them. If we see it, we replace it.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you.
Any further questions from the council? Thank you, Jason, appreciate it. Okay, that concludes the mayor's report. Move to public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer a public comment?
We do, Mr. Mayor.
And would you please read the rules for public comment?
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the committee of the whole for up to three minutes with a maximum of 30 minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the committee of the whole shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Will you please read the name of the first person wishing to offer a public comment? Thank you, Sunny. You have three minutes beginning now.
You initially canceled June 10th flag raising ceremony because you want to be fiscal responsible. You said the Pride event had been planned under Mayor Richard Irvin administration. Mayor Richard Irvin released his own statement and said, like a pride, June 10th was already approved and budgeted and advanced by the city council. An average, he said, it cost only like 1,500. Why is the City of Aurora did not honor June 10th in a formal city-led event? June 10th is not a community event. It is a federal holiday. It needs to be a city-led event, just like you had a Fourth of July every single year. June 10th is a National Independence Day, a federal holiday. It is celebrated end of slavery in the United States. The mayor of Aurora Journal said, you want to come back in a flag raising. Which are the special immigrants to the United States qualified for flag raising? And which ones are denied? You should deny the African-Americans community. So you're going to allow the Puerto Rican flags to fly and the Mexican flag? They were not slaves for 400 years. Black America was slaved, so you owe us money. African-Americans have been slaves for 400 years. June 10th is Independence Day for Black America. June 10th cannot be a community event like the mayor suggests. It is a federal holiday recognized by the U.S. government. Also, you said you want to reduce the demand on the city staff. The city employees should work. They are paid by the taxpayers. And the city should fund the flag raising ceremony. It's a federal holiday recognized by the U.S. government. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your public comment. Madam Clerk, will you please read the name of the next person wishing to offer a public comment? Ms. Pauly, you have three minutes beginning now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and happy allergy season, everybody. I rise today. The Health Department is promoting the 988 campaign. It's a national suicide hotline that covers suicide, mental health distress, substance use crisis. It's 24/7. It's a national hotline. This would be a great resource to disseminate to your various constituents. When you combine that with 211, which covers Kane and Kendall County, not the other ones, which does community resources and things like that, and 911, you get whole person care. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. Also, the Health Department is, has been distributing the naloxone. They'll be at the King County Fair. The coroner's office has been around distributing the naloxone and the gun locks as well. That's that. Have a great rest of your day.
Thank you, Mr. Pauly. Madam Clerk, will you please read the name of the next person wishing to offer a public comment?
Rick Lawrence.
Recently, the state eliminated the grocery tax, the 1% groceries tax. Now, before you, you guys want to install a new tax. You can spin it any way you want. You can say it's not a new tax. It is a new tax. You didn't have it before. It was a state tax. We can spend $26 million on a park. We can give every restaurant that walks through the door millions of dollars. We can give every developer millions of dollars. Valley Honda gets $13 million. Genesis gets $10 million. But hell no is that single mom buying groceries for her three or four kids going to save that 1%. It's a token gesture in this city. Now, you'll have your finance people come up and tell you, the world's going to end if you don't have the half of 1% of the budget. Same people that justified every bad deal that's lost us millions of dollars. We can't even for one second in this city, think of the actual people that are paying the bills. They're paying your big salary. They're paying for all your health insurance. So, but no, we're not going to let that single mom with those kids keep that 1% out of her groceries because of the greed of government, because you can't figure it out. You just put 130-something million dollars' worth of debt this year on the taxpayers. You raise taxes. You raise the water rates. Oh, now we're going to get that 1% out of that poor, hard-working family because you just can't let it go. You can justify it with your chips and everything else and tell everyone it's the same bag of chips and everything else. It's still you taking that 1%. You move the casino over to the Batavia School District, helping the Batavia residents over there, not the Aurora residents. The property taxes are going to benefit the Batavia residents. But don't worry, you're going to take that 1% out of that family. It's amazing to me that you just can't even think, just give a token gesture of relief. Just don't blame Rich Irvin, he's gone. Everyone else that votes for stuff like this, you should be gone. But you can listen to finance, you can tell all these people, it comes down to, you have to take that 1% out of that hard-working family's money. Not going to bother me, most of our shopping isn't in the city. But you just got to suck that 1% out of that pocket because you can't let it go. It's a half of 1% of your budget. It's a good gesture. That's why the state got rid of it. The state got rid of it because it said it unfairly attacked hard, poor, and working people. So you just keep justifying it, tell everybody it's the same tax and, and think that's the way to go. It's wrong. You should give people a break.
Mr. Lawrence, three minutes is up. Thank you for sharing your comments with the council tonight. Are there any more speakers, Madam Clerk?
There are not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, there's no more speakers. We will move on to the committee reports. I'll begin by asking Chairman of the B Z and E Committee, Chairman Seville, please read the B Z and E Committee report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. On, let's see, July 29th, the B Z and E Committee met and we had one item to consider, 25-0513. And that's a resolution, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a not-to-exceed agreement for design phase engineering and planning special services with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly, Inc. in the amount of $99,900 for the replaced airfield signage, wind cones, runway 15 and 27 reels, and airport rotating beacon, construct guard lights at runway 1533 project at the Aurora Municipal Airport. Steve Andrews came before us. This amount is not to exceed $99,900. And only the local share would be a total of $37,499 for the city.
Consent.
Anything more to add, Steve, than that?
I have nothing.
Are there any questions from the council?
Consent.
There's no questions, this item will go on the consent agenda?
Consent, and that's the B Z and E report.
Thank you, Chairman Seville. Next, I'll ask Chairman Ted Messiakos to give the Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Mayor. The Finance Committee met on July 10th, 2025 and reviewed the following items. Item 25-0485, a resolution authorizing execution of labor agreement between the City of Aurora and the Aurora Supervisor Association, A S A, from January 1st, 2026 through December 31st, 2028.
Consent.
Are there any questions on this agenda item? There being none, we'll add this to the consent agenda.
Next item, Mayor, 25-0519, an ordinance enacting a municipal grocery retailer's occupation tax and municipal grocery service occupation tax.
Unfinished.
Unfinished.
This item will go on unfinished business. Are there any members of the council that wish to ask any questions on this agenda item? I get a short presentation from Finance.
Good afternoon. Stacey Peterson, Director of Financial Operations. Before you have the proposed ordinance to institute the 1% grocery tax, I'm going to give you just a little bit of information about the grocery tax and why we're enacting it. Back in 1990, the state introduced a tax reform aimed to standardize the collection process. And the 1% grocery tax revenue was collected by the state and distributed to local governments. And this is to serve for various support of operations and essential functions. In August of 2024, the governor signed into legislation revoking the 1% grocery tax and will no longer be collecting it as of January 2026. That legislation also allowed us to, allowed municipalities to institute the 1% grocery tax. By doing this, we have to do that by October 1st. We filed that with the state. And the state, once the ordinance is filed with them, they will still continue to collect it for us and then remit it to us, just like they're doing now. This legislation is just allowing that to happen. This is not a new tax. This ordinance will continue the practice that has been going on, collecting the 1% for the past 35 years. The state is just shifting the implementation of the revenue to municipalities. We could potentially lose approximately $4.5 million if we don't implement this. And this is used for critical public safety and road maintenance and public works and also community programs. Also, we all know that with the 2020 census, that we are potentially losing 4.3 due to the undercount of the census. On, attached to the Legis藏item, I had attached a frequently asked questions that the Page Mayor and Managers Conference had put together. This is a useful tool that we could use to educate some of our constituents. I would also like to show that additionally, I M L has on their website information about the grocery tax. They, as of, I think, June 27th, there's 282 municipalities that are on that list. Now, there could be other municipalities that have enacted it and just haven't told I M L yet that they have. And also, we did have a question about SNAP benefits. Federal law prohibits the collection of a grocery tax on items that are eligible for SNAP. So individuals that have that program and utilize that would not be taxed on items. And that, if you have any other additional questions? Oh, this PowerPoint is also attached to the legislative item as well.
Thank you, Stacey. Did you have anything to add, Mr. Minnick?
No, just available for questions as well.
Any questions from the council on this agenda items? Alderman Barrero.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Lesh. I, I do have a question, a couple of questions. One is, can this be adopted in 2026 and then be effective in 2027? Or do we have to do it now? That's my first question. The second question is, the, what is our fund balance presently? And how would that be impacted by, by foregoing this for one year? You know, during the Finance Committee meeting, I raised a question about our budget cycle. So unfortunately, our budget cycle is later and we won't get clarity on what our, what our budget picture looks like until approximately when this deadline hits for filing this. So, so I was just curious about the, the fund balance situation if we were able to forego this a year and then pick it up a year later.
Well, if we were to forego the tax, first off, I'd need to do a little bit more research to understand the window and exactly how, exactly how the grocery tax is allowed. I had heard at one point that this was kind of a one, almost a one-shot deal that was being allowed at this particular point in time. But I need to clarify that and get that nailed down 100%. Number two, it would be my contention that regardless of whether we have the grocery tax or not, staff is going to work to try to present to the city council a balanced budget. So the fund balance is in accordance with our policies. And right now, it, we are, as of the end of, of the 24 audit, which is when we measure our, and, and do that, that metric, we are in, in compliance with the fund balance policy that was enacted several years ago. And it would, I, I would suggest that if we were to forego the grocery tax, that we would need to make other, take other action to make sure that we still present a balanced budget in the general fund and make, make, make the city whole, so to speak. What that would mean though is potentially service cuts, could be revenue increases in other areas. But there would be an impact in some way, shape, or form.
So just to clarify, I want to make sure I understand your question. You want to know, could we do this in October of 2026? For 2027?
Can we hold it off a year? That's my question.
So that's a question on the legislation?
Yeah. Typically, with sales taxes or with a home rule sales tax, you can increase it at two points within the year. However, I'm not certain about the grocery tax and whether that was allowed within that specific piece of legislation.
Are there any other questions?
I have a question.
Alderman Franco?
I have a comment. So we've been paying a picture that we're fiscally challenged right now. So for every $100 a grocery, somebody's going to pay a dollar more. It's going to provide us, what, about $4.5 million?
Correct.
Something like that. Sugar Grove, Montgomery, North Aurora, Batavia, Geneva, Naperville, St. Charles, and Yorkville have all passed us.
Correct.
So I'm just throwing it out there, because I think we need to take a more global picture of what this does if we do do it, what if it does if we don't do it, who else is doing it? Who else is not going to do it? Which, because right now, we have 282 municipalities, and this is starting to grow because St. Charles and Naperville aren't on there yet. So I just want to throw that out there, because this is a significant piece of money for the city. And I look at it through the lens of a dollar for every $100, and we're going to get $4.5 million. It doesn't seem like it's a stretch, especially when everybody else is doing it. And there's a reason why 282 communities and more are doing it, because what the state tends to do is they tend to put mandates on us, unfunded mandates, and pass things to the cities. So they can say what they want about why they're getting rid of us. They would just prefer the municipalities to handle it, which is fine. That's what they do, we understand that. So this is what is happening going forward. We just have to be cognizant of that when we make our decisions. So I just think it would be fiscally, I won't say irresponsible, but it would be challenging for us if we didn't do that, for our taxpayers. Now, we've got to cut services or put the taxes on the back of property taxes to make up that $4.5 million deficit. Somebody's going to pay it somewhere. So in my mind, many times, a consumption tax, a consumer tax, where if I buy it, I pay it. If I don't buy it, I don't have to pay it, whether it be gasoline or food. I know we have to buy food. But I think that would be more of a judicious way to go, as opposed to you're paying on your property taxes and that's it. Not saying it's going to go there, but I'm just saying, these are the kind of things we have to take into consideration. So I'm just throwing that out there. Thank you.
Alderwoman Smith?
Perhaps Alderman Franco can clarify, because I was just going through that list there. You're saying St. Charles and Naperville have both passed that?
They just passed it, but it's not on the list yet. They just recently passed it in a news.
How about Oswego and Plainfield?
I don't know about them.
Okay, they're not on the list as well. Because I'm a little concerned if the area around us or not, the people who are going to go there to grocery shop, whether it be $1 per 100, but that is a possibility.
Yeah, people tend to go to their grocery store. They tend not to move very much unless something, unless they actually physically move their location or something along those lines. But there was, the legislation passed some time ago. So, and there was a group of municipalities that I believe tackled it right away. And now, it seems like as we're coming up to the end of the summer and start to, end of the summer already, and starting to get closer to the deadline, that there are additional municipalities. People who haven't addressed the issue yet are starting to.
Okay, the second part of my question is, Stacy, you said that they, the payment will still go through the state, and the state will be passing that on to the municipalities?
Yes, just like they do now.
And is there any, because we know our lovely state, are there any costs from the state for passing that through on to us? Do they charge for that service that they will be providing? I'm not sure why it can't come straight to the municipality.
I will have to check on that, but I do know they charge us for the home rule. When they collect the home rule sales tax on our behalf, they do charge us a fee for that as well.
Right, it just seems like that possibly could be something that the state would be doing, charging us for that pass-through. I'm pretty sure they're not doing it for nothing.
I can double-check just.
Just for a point of clarity, Shannon Cameron, Chief of Staff. Initially, that was in the legislation, but that that was removed, that there would be any service fee. So they are passing on the full amount to the municipalities now.
You know that 100%, that's in writing somewhere.
It is in writing. I can send it on to Alderman. There was an amendment to that legislation.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Alderman Larson?
Thank you. Yeah, I guess a question about some alternatives. I believe, if I recall correctly, the state is allowing us the option of implementing a grocery tax up to 1%. It doesn't necessarily have to be 1%. Would it be possible to, as an alternative, so we don't have to take a $4.5 million cut right away, but also eventually reduce the tax burden? Would it be possible to write into the legislation a date at which the tax goes down, so it could go down maybe a quarter of a percent each year? And then by 2030, it would be gone? And that would give us more time to get the budget sorted out? And also decrease that tax, especially as people with SNAP benefits are going to be, in some cases, losing it in a couple of years because of decisions by the federal government?
I believe it does have to be 1%, doesn't it?
I'd have to double-check to see if we could do that option.
Yeah, the only options I've heard related to the grocery tax so far are in 1% increments, not up to 1%. I believe there is a differentiation between the grocery tax and something like the home rule sales tax, where you can increase it by quarter percents. So, but I am not familiar with a provision that allows that with the grocery tax, at least not at this point. Perhaps that changes at some point along the way. Legislation does tend to have an organic life, and it can change over time. But additionally, you would think that if you can impose it, you can take it away. So there could be, I would gather, that there would be a very high likelihood that we would have the ability to sunset it at some point if we would like to.
Okay, I'll just direct that question to Legal. If at any point we wanted to get rid of it, I would assume that we would have the ability to get rid of it if we were to identify a windfall revenue stream?
We can get rid of the tax at any point. I was just trying to look, because I believe you're correct about the 1%. I was trying to, of course, I'm pulling up a bill that's 200 pages long. So I'm not going to find it right now, but I can definitely double-check that. But my memory of it is that it was a one, like it was a take it or leave it. You could either, it was 1% or nothing.
That's my recollection as well.
Yeah, I'm not going to find it in the 200 pages right this second, but I can follow up with that later. Just to double-check. But that's my memory of the grocery tax, is that it's 1% or nothing.
Yeah, I was just wondering if we could get it in ordinance, so it has a set date rather than a speculative date.
And we may also, because it is going to be collected by the state, we may have to adhere to their deadlines to change it or remove it. So in other words, we may not be able to change the rate, but if we were to remove it, typically, the state only allows changes to taxes that it collects and remits to localities two times per year. So we may have to fall into those timelines in the future. That's going to be something that's going to be determined as, you know, as the tax goes along.
Are there any other questions? Okay, this item will go on unfinished business. We'll move to the next agenda item. Chairman Messiakos?
Thank you, Mayor. Next item, 25-0543, an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of adjustable-rate demand economic development revenue bonds at Aurora University in one or more series of the city of Aurora, Kane, DuPage, Will, and Kendall Counties, Illinois, in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $16 million. And confirming the sale thereof, authorizing the execution and delivery of a loan agreement, trust, indenture, bond purchase agreement, and related documents, authorizing the distribution of an official statement approving the delivery of a letter of credit, reimbursement agreement, and a remarketing agreement, and authorizing certain related matters. Mr. Minnick?
Good to see you. I'm sorry, I missed.
We'll get a short presentation, but Alderman, bug moved to put it on consent agenda.
Thank you. Chris Minnick, Chief Financial Officer. Over the years, the City of Aurora and Aurora University have collaborated to provide financing for various campus improvements and facilities in pursuit of constructing a premier campus for higher learning in the City of Aurora. The city has issued tax-exempt bonds on behalf of the university to lower financing costs for qualified improvements in accordance with IRS rules. The last such transaction was before the council during the 2019-2020 timeframe, and proceeds were utilized to refinance bonds that were issued in 2004, and also to provide for improvements to various athletic and administrative facilities. The financing mechanism that has been used in these transactions is known as conduit debt in the form of private activity bonds. While the city is the issuer of the bonds from a legal standpoint, these bonds do not appear on the city's financial statements. Additionally, there is absolutely no obligation to the city to make any debt service payments nor to levy any taxes in support of the debt service related to the bonds. The obligation for the repayment of the bonds remains exclusively with Aurora University. The documents are extremely explicit in this regard. Currently, the university is looking to construct a 45,000-square-foot learning commons in the coming months. AU is requesting that the city approve the issuance of an amount of conduit debt in the form of private activity bonds in an amount not to exceed $16 million, along with execution of the related documents to facilitate the financing of these improvements on a tax-exempt basis. Representatives from Aurora University are present today, and I will have them elaborate on the specifics of their project in a few moments. Aurora University is a not-for-profit organization organized under 501(c)(3) laws, but does not qualify under IRS tax regulations to be able to issue tax-exempt debt directly. The purposes for which the financing is sought do qualify for tax exemption, but due to its status as a 501(c)(3) corporation, Aurora University cannot directly issue tax-exempt debt under IRS regs. The city, as a unit of local government, can serve as a conduit issuer to issue the tax-exempt bonds for the benefit of Aurora University, so that Aurora University can take advantage of lower financing costs. That is the transaction that is before you today. These arrangements are fairly common and are very useful in lowering financing costs for certain qualified improvements and projects under IRS rules. While the city is the issuer for the transaction, it is important to note and understand that the city has no obligation for the repayment of the bonds. The bonds do not appear on the face of the city's financial statements. Additionally, the documents state explicitly in several locations that the city has no obligation for repayment of the debt, and that bondholders have no right to compel the city to levy a tax or to provide for any debt service payments related to the bond. Those responsibilities fall to the university and its guarantors. Additionally, any city costs of issuance for the bonds are paid by Aurora University. Therefore, the issuance of the bonds will have no impact on the city's residents, on any tax levy, any revenue streams, nor expenses. The impacts to community will only be positive in the form of enhanced, modern facilities on the Aurora University campus. And the bonds do issue, or to be issued, allow for lower financing costs for the transaction. In a moment, I will turn the floor over to Sharon Maxwell, who is the Senior Vice President for Business and Finance at Aurora University, and she will describe the project in detail. After Sharon's comments, I will ask for Nancy Burke from Chapman &amp; Cutler to offer a brief overview of the transaction and the related safeguards protecting the city. Chapman &amp; Cutler is representing the city as bond counsel in this transaction. So with that, I will turn the floor over to Sharon Maxwell, Senior Vice President for Business and Finance.
Thank you very much, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, Alderman, and Alderwomen of the council. It's such a pleasure to be here today. In 2019 and 2020?
Please state your name, just for the record.
Oh, Sharon Maxwell, sorry. From Aurora University. We brought some pictures here to share with you what we're doing with this project. This project is a 45-square-foot, three-story building located along Prairie Street. Sorry about that. Right in front of our parking garage. It's currently green space. Well, actually, it's currently gravel, but it's unused space. We're not taking out any parking spots or disrupting any other buildings for the university. This is where we're going to move our library facilities. This will also house our academic support center, our careers center. It will house our university archives. It will have a makerspace. It will have a content hub for the creation of videos and podcasts, as well as being a very flexible space, primarily designed to support our commuter students who are coming right here from the City of Aurora and the surrounding communities. You assisted us in similar debt in 2019 and again in 2020. And we're asking for your assistance to issue debt that will support this construction. We also have approximately $15 million Illinois State Grant that will support this project. And then the remaining costs of construction, outfitting, landscaping, et cetera, will be through donations and university reserves. I'll introduce Nancy Burke, who is bond counsel.
Welcome, Ms. Burke.
Thank you, good evening. I'm Nancy Burke, partner at Chapman &amp; Cutler. And as Chris has said, I serve as bond counsel to the City of Aurora. In our role as bond counsel, we are responsible for preparing the documents. We draft the core bond and debture loan agreement and also deliver a tax exemption opinion that the interest on the bonds is exempt from federal income taxation. The basis, the legal basis for this transaction is in federal tax law, which permits interest on debt issued for the benefit of a not-for-profit organization to be exempt from federal income taxation. It is the same basis by which the city issues its governmental bonds to fund its roadways, sewers, all those sorts of things. The tax law, however, does not permit a not-for-profit to issue that debt directly and requires that a conduit serve in that role. And the real public policy behind that is to make sure that it is a not-for-profit that's using the funds in a method to further its mission and its charitable purposes. Because if those activities were not being conducted by the not-for-profits, they would fall to the community, they'd fall to both state and local governments, they'd fall to the federal government. And that's just the general public policy, all of laws, just the enforcement of public policy. So that is the role of the city. But as a conduit, the city is not liable whatsoever. There are many, many provisions. These are special, limited obligations of the city. And they are offered, there is an official statement that goes out to the market, to investors, that review, that's bold, bold, all caps on the cover page. The liability for the repayment of the debt, and that is the university. And the university has also engaged BMO Harris Bank, that'll provide a letter of credit to support their payments on the bonds. So that provides an additional source of collateral. So all the payment obligations fall to the city. If they default, it's their default, not the city's default. There is also, should something go awry, there is also a very robust indemnity provision in the loan agreement as well, from the borrower to the city. Happy to answer any questions on the structure or just in general.
Any questions from the council on this agenda item for other staff, the bond counsel, or AU University? Yes, Alderman Nunez?
A question for Aurora University. Could you share with us the hours that this facility would be open for students?
I don't generally know what the hours are. Right now, our library is open until midnight. Right now, our library is open until midnight. So generally, it's seven until midnight.
Thank you. Any other questions? Alderman White?
Thank you. So this is actually a question for Aurora University representatives. Maybe, I think it is. So we mentioned that, being that it's a not-for-profit, you can't issue your own bonds. So if, and it was also mentioned that the city of Aurora has engaged in this, I guess, agreement with Aurora University previously. So if the city of Aurora chose not to, is there another option, or is the city of Aurora the only option in which you have to issue the bonds?
So our 2002 bonds, which we just have one more payment to go on, was issued by the Illinois Finance Authority. So that would be another option if the city chose not to do this.
Are there any advantages or disadvantages for using the city of Aurora versus another option?
Well, I mean, we like that it furthers our partnership with, you know, this is happening right within the city limits. The entire project is within the city limits. We were fortunate to do it before in 2019 and 2020. And again, I think just furthers and deepens the partnership between the university and the city.
And I think traditionally, the city has embraced that role, both for the collaborative aspects, as Ms. Maxwell has alluded to, but as well as the community engagement and being able to provide a world-class and modern amenity for the residents and the benefit of the residents of the city as well.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any further questions from the council? No further questions or discussion, this item will go on consent. Finance Chairman, please read the next agenda item.
Thank you, Mayor. Next item, number 25-0552, An Ordnance Amending Article 44, Section 191 of the Municipal Code Hotel Occupancy Tax. Mr. Minnick?
Thank you. Chris Minnick, Chief Financial Officer. Thank you. As mentioned, the hotel occupancy tax appears in Section 44-191 of the city's Code of Ordinances. It was enacted back in December of 1987. At that particular time, there was a tax imposed at a rate of 3% on a hotel room rental charge. It's important to note that the hotel occupancy tax does not apply to things like room service, movie rentals, incidental expenses that would go along with the rental of a hotel room. It only applies to the charges to rent that room. It's also worthy of note that the rate has not changed since the tax was imposed during 1987. It is a tax that is collected from the person renting the room. The hotelier collects it from the hotel guest and then passes it through to the city on a monthly basis, actually, is the next bullet point. And it's also important to note that the hotel occupancy tax does not apply to rooms and dormitories that are operated by religious institutions, schools, or universities, including staff housing that might be present there. There is also an exemption in the code for anyone who has a written lease in excess of 30 days. The hotel occupancy tax would not apply to them as well. What we found over time is that the city's rate is now toward the lower end of area communities, and we'll take a look at some, a comparison with some area communities and their hotel taxes here in a second. But we've been seeing that rates of 5% to 6% are a lot more common than the 3% that was enacted many years ago. Additionally, the city generates approximately $550,000 to $585,000 annually at that 3% tax rate. Once the revenues are collected, they inure to the benefit of the general fund, and we do support the activities of the Aurora Area Convention and Visitors Bureau with a financial contribution that comes from the hotel tax. That financial contribution is approximately $225,000 annually, meaning that the additional, roughly $350,000, is available for city operations on an annual basis. The next slide is just a chart that goes back to 2018 and shows the revenue amounts that we've collected with the hotel occupancy tax over the past six or seven years. You can see we've averaged over that seven-year period just over $500,000 annually, but we do have some very low years during 2020 and a little bit lower during 2021 related to COVID. If you exclude those years from the average, the collections total about $554,000 on an annual basis, and they've trended a little higher in the past few years, as you would expect. The next slide is a comparison to area communities. I've highlighted the city of Aurora, both the current rate at 3% toward the bottom of the slide. Additionally, the proposed rate of 6% is also highlighted. You can see that the rates go anywhere from about 3% in Oak Brook up to approximately 10% for the city of Joliet, with most of the rates falling in at least the 5% to 6% to 7% category through that comparison. So the proposal that's before you and that is included in the packets tonight is to increase the hotel occupancy tax from 3% to 6%. Additionally, there is a provision in the proposed ordinance that would incorporate a $10 daily tax amount for a comp room. As we do know, we are about to have a hotel open at the casino that's under construction, generally at I-88 and Farnsworth Avenue. And typically casinos will comp rooms or offer free rooms to players at certain levels of play as a reward. We want to make sure that we still collect the tax from, in those particular instances, and the ordinance that's in the packet tonight does incorporate that daily $10 tax rate. Additionally, we would be looking at making these changes effective January 1, 2026. Where we are in the year right now, toward the end of July, offers us the opportunity to have some communication with our hoteliers, to let them know what's coming and that the rate would increase as of January 1, 2026. The goal would be, obviously, to provide additional revenue annually to support city operations. And just in terms of some statistics, we currently have about 635 hotel rooms in the Aurora inventory, and we do expect that the Casino Hotel would add approximately 220 rooms once it opens here in the next coming months. In terms of the revenue, right now, as we mentioned, we generate approximately $570,000 annually. We would expect that that would double. I've actually estimated the number at $568,000 in that first bullet point up there. That is additional revenue that would come from the increase in the rate. Additionally, we anticipate or have estimated on a conservative basis that new rooms at the casino, the 220 we talked about a few moments ago, could generate an additional $560,000 once the casino gets up and running and normalizes its operation. So we do anticipate that in the next couple of years, we could see potential additional revenues of approximately $1.1 million. In terms of the hotel occupancy tax, there are several benefits with this particular tax. It is a discretionary and consumption-based tax, as Alderman Franco alluded to a few moments ago. Typically, a hotel room stay is a conscious decision that someone makes as part of a larger vacation or trip or something along those lines. Additionally, hotel room stays are not typically shopped or selected on the basis of what the tax rate is. They tend to be selected based on the location, how convenient they are to whatever attraction the person wants to visit. Given the proximity to the amenities in the city of Aurora that the hotels have, I would anticipate that there would be, still be significant demand for hotel rooms here within the city. The tax applies to and is mainly paid by non-residents, people passing through, again, visiting those amenities and attractions that we have in the city. And again, we would provide some additional revenue to help offset operational costs. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes, so just kind of going through this and everywhere that talks about the $10 flat fee, nowhere does it say daily. It just says $10 flat fee. So I think if we need to incorporate daily, if that's indeed what it is.
Yeah, I believe there is a definition that references that the hotel occupancy tax applies for every 24-hour period or part thereof, but we will make that change. We'll make it crystal clear.
We have nothing in this that says daily.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. We'll make that before council. I'm sorry.
Alderwoman Vade?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chris, I wanted to ask, this $10 comp room fee is specific to casino?
It would be to any hotel operator.
Like tourism raffle or convention raffle?
Yes.
Door prizes?
Yes. If there is a room that is going to be given to someone for free, we'd be looking to collect $10.
And how will it be tracked?
The hotels have, would have the obligation, they have the obligation under the ordinance to keep books and records, not only of their hotel room sales and rentals, but also of the comp rooms. That is written into the ordinance as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on this agenda item?
Consent.
No further questions?
Unfinished.
This item will go on unfinished business, and I'll allow the chairman to continue with his report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Minnick.
Thank you, Mr. Minnick. Thank you, Mayor. Next item, 25-0554, An Ordnance Amending the Ward 6 Budget for Fiscal Year 2025.
Consent.
Consent, all right. Next item.
No further questions, this item goes on consent.
Okay. 25-0564, Resolution Authorizing the Purchase of Cornerstone's On-Demand Public Sector E-Learning Subscription in the Amount of $106,658.60 from August 15, 2025 to August 15, 2028.
Consent.
If there's no questions on this agenda item, it'll go on the consent agenda.
I'm sorry, go ahead. I got a question for you. So with Alderman Seville's grant or his request, I thought originally those type of things end at the Finance Committee. I didn't know they come to committee hall. Now, I don't know for sure, but can we look into that? Because I think when we do budget amendments like that, it was, I thought it was supposed to be finance-only, just that.
Action, no action needed.
Well, yeah, that's kind of what I thought going for. Just want to make sure, because we're going to probably do this on and off again for the next few years, just want to make sure that it's just there, I guess.
Okay, I remember when I pushed mine through, it ended at rap finance, but then was stayed on the agenda to go through the whole process for approval.
Yeah. Chris Minnick, Chief Financial Officer, again, because this is an addition to the budget, it does need to come through the full. It's not simply reclassifying the use of funds that are already in existence, it's adding to, it's adding to the previously authorized budget.
Okay. All right, so there's a distinction.
So yes, yes, whenever we actually add to the budget, it should come, there should be a formal...
Alderman Seville?
I'm just curious, how is it adding? Where did the money come from, if I didn't already have it?
It's coming from, my understanding is it's coming from the reserves that had previously been accumulated.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, and it wasn't budgeted specifically in 2025.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sorry for any misunderstanding.
I like free monies.
But Alderman Franco, you are correct. I think that the process we set up with the new rules a year or so ago, that it, the discussion sort of ends here.
I think we'd all want free money for our wars as well, Alderman Seville. Mayor, with that, if there's no other questions from the council, that concludes our report from Finance Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Masiacos. I'll ask Chairman Carl Franco to give the PHST Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Health, Safety, and Transportation Committee meeting scheduled for July 8, 2025 was canceled, hence no report.
Thank you, Chairman Franco. I will ask Chairwoman Juanita Garza to give the IT Committee report.
Yes, Mayor. We met on July 7. The first item is 25-0499, A Resolution Authorizing the Execution of Phase 3 Construction Indurane Agreement with HR Green Inc. to the Not Exceed Amount $199,731 for a 25-citywide restocking project.
Are there any questions on this agenda item?
Nope.
If there's no questions or discussion, this agenda item will move to the consent agenda.
Okay. Next item is 25-0502, A Resolution Authorizing the Use of Funds Not Exceed $455,000 for Furniture, Fixtures, and Equipment for the New Fire Station 9 and 13.
Consent.
Are there any questions on this agenda item? Alderman Masiacos?
Yes. Can we have Mr. Minnick, or I should say, is Ms. Coulter here, or now from purchasing?
Is Jolene Coulter here?
Good evening, Jolene Coulter, Director of Purchasing. Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. You don't have to call me sir, but thank you for coming up to the podium. My question is, so we know the cost, right? We have the cost in the resolution for the furniture?
That was part of what came to, was presented to council before as part of the whole...
And there's a fixed number to it?
Yep.
All right. So there's no issue, as far as you're concerned, about adding a fixed number to this resolution?
No, at this point in time, and actually, the list, as we discussed in committee, we have the quotes for the furniture, we have the quotes for the fitness equipment, everything else will follow purchasing processes and formally or informally be bid, so.
Okay. I would like to put this on unfinished, like to continue this conversation, if not with you, with Finance Department, by getting more of a concrete number to this resolution.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions on this agenda item? If there's no questions, we'll move this to the unfinished portion, and I'll let Chairwoman Garza continue.
The next item is 25-0524, A Resolution Authorizing the Director of Purchasing to Award a Contract for the Citywide Mobbing Bid 25-013, List and A, B, C, E, 2, F, 1, and J to vendors, ground works, Land Design Plantville, Illinois, Berry Landscaping, Lackport, Illinois, and Apex Landscaping, Hawthorne, Illinois.
Consent.
Are there any questions or discussion on this agenda item? If there are none on this agenda item, we'll go on consent agenda.
The next item is 25-0538, Letter of Intent to Remain a Part of U.S. Army Corps of Engineer USA CE Study Regarding the Removal of Dams and the Fox River.
Consent.
Consent.
There's no further questions on this item, it'll go on the consent agenda.
And as we have, we conclude the meeting with that item, Mayor.
Thank you, Chairwoman Garza. I will now ask Chairman Bug to give their rap committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rules Administration Procedure Committee met on July 1, reviewed the following items, 25-0535, Resolution Authorizing 2025 Ward 2 Scholarship Program. That's for information only that passed at Committee 5.0. That concludes the report. Thank you.
There's no action needed on this agenda item. Thank you, Chairman Bug. Okay, now we'll move to the held agenda item. So Clerk will please read the held agenda item and ordinance amending.
25-0516, An Ordnance Amending Chapter 2 and Chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to the Organization of the Departments and Divisions of the City.
And Mr. Thompson has a short presentation.
Yes. And then also just to highlight, the mayor's office sent a memo over regarding this particular item, so we're looking to hold this at unfinished business pending some research from legal regarding the language specifically to equity. After some discussion, we realized that in order to be in compliance with some executive orders around the equity language, we want to make sure that we are doing so, so that we don't lose federal grants. So just wanted to share that before I proceed. So anything in this... So anything in this, as you see equity, just understand, by the time it goes to council, the idea is that language might be changed, but 99% of the presentation is going to go forward, if that makes sense. So, here are the summary of the key structural changes. The mayor's office of community affairs is being dissolved. With that, they have three divisions within the mayor's office of community affairs. One is equity, which we briefly spoke about, engagement and special events. Engagement will be moved to, to report to the mayor's office as a sub-department. Special events will be reporting to marketing communications and special events, that's going to be a title change. The clerk's office is moving under the law department to report to the mayor's office, or from the law department to report to the mayor's office. And then emergency management will be also reporting to the mayor's office as well. The Office of Sustainability Development and Business Opportunity is being established encompassing sustainability, economic development, and replacing the former MoED or Mayor's Office of Economic Development. And then another realignment is animal care and control. The division will be transitioning to facility, from public facilities to community services. With all of these moves, we discussed this with staff and personnel and really aligned these on best practices and to ensure that the departments were operating at best efficiency. Next, the sub-department part, so to clear that up, what that is, I know there was some questions around that. So, in addition to the departments established in this article, the following sub-departments are hereby curated as administrative subdivisions of the city. The head of each sub-department shall possess the purchasing authority afforded to a department head, have general supervision over assigned staff, and may establish work rules for the personnel assigned. The divisions and departments that are going to be recognized as sub-departments are the Office of the City Clerk, the Aurora Emergency Management Agency, the Office of Sustainability Development and Business Opportunity, the Office of Community Engagement, and the Office of Equity. But again, we are going to make some changes to equity by this time next week based upon the recommendations from legal after they do their, and complete their research. And then finally, just a kind of visual aid to kind of understand what's happening. So again, community affairs or MOCA is being dissolved, and then we have five sub-departments coming in. This was what were called the quasi-departments. I know there was no contention around the language, we made those changes to be sub-departments. The Office of the City Clerk, again, the Aurora Emergency Management Agency, the Office of Sustainability Development and Business Opportunity, the Office of Community Engagement, and then finally, the Office of Equity. And then the two divisions that are going under new departments are special events. Again, that's going to be marketing, special, communications and special events now, and then animal care and control will be reporting to community services. Are there any questions?
I have a question.
Absolutely.
Alderman Smith?
Yeah, so I guess I'm just trying to understand why, and maybe you said it, maybe it's just not going through my thick head, why are you calling them sub-departments or quasi-departments when they truly are departments? What made you decide to do that?
So this was, this was something that I think Rick Beanstrad put in there originally when they created the Alderman's Office as a quasi-department, and it came up as, why are we doing that? So we just came up with the terminology, sub-department.
Well, the Alderman's Office is a complete different story, because these are all under you.
I'm giving you his, his explanation as to why we use the word quasi-department and why we're changing it to sub-department. And secondly, there's no divisions that report underneath, there's not multiple divisions under these sub-departments.
So the people that will be heading these departments are department heads or department chairs, or how, what are you calling them?
It's more like a division level itself.
Okay, so someone who is the head of, like Jen? What is Jen, what is your, what is your, what is Jen's title going to be?
City Clerk.
Okay, so she's a department head?
She's the city clerk.
Okay, so then the, what would Natalie's?
She'll be the head of emergency management.
So we're calling them the head of? I'm just trying to figure what, since, since we're doing this and we're going through this.
So the title, for that, to be clear, the title of that.
Because everybody in the city has a title, so that's why I'm trying to figure what the.
Of course, yeah, for the emergency management.
What they are is a department, not a chief. We had the chief department.
There's no, no, if you're what you're asking, if I understand it, there will be no chief. They will have the, like, in the ordinance, the purchasing authority of a director, but it'll really depend case by case. So like, in the case of the clerk, that's a city clerk. The title of emergency management, I believe, will be emergency management manager going forward. So those titles will be subject to change, but they have the authority, and that's why it's put in there in the ordinance like that, of that director to make purchases, but not in the same way, like a chief or executive officer. Does that make sense?
It makes sense, I just, I still don't understand why, but it's, it's your, you know, privilege to, to set this up the way you want to, I just don't quite understand the reason behind it, but it, it's.
So it's pretty much, these are the size of a division. When they created the chief position, and I wasn't here on the council at the time, I don't know if you were, but it was back during the economic hardships of the 08, 09 recession, the position of chief was created to oversee divisions, and it came with higher compensation levels as well as different responsibilities. And so this is like a department head that's a division size that doesn't come with those responsibilities or compensation.
Now, that comment makes sense.
Does that, does that make sense to you?
Yeah, that comment makes sense.
So, finding the right terminology or title.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
But it's also looking at the history of what happened years ago.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions on this agenda item? Alderman Messiakos?
Thank you. Point of clarification here, Mr. Thompson, thank you.
Absolutely.
Where is the mayor's department or organizational structure referenced in our ordinance? Can you remind me, I, I haven't had a chance to look into it.
For sure, yeah, so the mayor doesn't have a department. I know some of the language that Rick wanted to establish was like an official mayor's, like, department, that wasn't done with the ordinance. He decided against it, he said, for the restructure, it wasn't necessary, my understanding. Rick, who wrote the legislation.
Okay. I look at your structure here, the mayor is, is right next to the Alderman's Office, but yet I still see that we're, even though it's rewritten that our, our Alderman's Office reports, our, our chief reports to the RAP Committee, it's still considered a sub-department.
So what's the question?
If you look at it, it comes under direct under the city council. Are you looking at the diagram or looking at the legislation?
I'm looking at the, I'm, I've got the diagram on the screen and I have legislation in front of me.
What was the exact question again?
So, we're considered a sub, we're still being considered a sub-department.
Correct, well, that's, that's not changing much.
Correct, you just said correct.
Okay.
I'll look at the chart. It doesn't look like a sub-department. Alderman's Office is right there, right next to the mayor's office.
Well, that's how it's always been. That's not changing.
It's not changing on the chart, but I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the legislation.
Let me look at the legislation. What does it say in the legislation that you're seeing?
It's under sub-departments.
It's under sub-departments?
Yes.
Well, so originally, it was a quasi-department, right? We changed the word sub-department because there was concern with the word, we changed the sub-department. But the Alderman's Office has always been titled as that, is my understanding. That's, we haven't changed that. The only major changes are what's been in the presentation. That's why I didn't include anything about it in particular.
So, we're not addressing the mayor's office, we're just addressing the Alderman's Office as part of this, well, it's in the document that we're addressing.
Well, if I understand the question, nothing's changed with the Alderman's Office in terms of reporting, or your status, or your authority, nothing's changing with that.
Alderman Seville?
Yes, in relation to what Alderman Messiakos is asking, what is the mayor's office called? And what, is it, is it a sub-department?
Yeah, so again, in terms of what's changing for establishment, there is no mayor's office on here.
What says Mayor Jonathan D. Lash?
Yes, it's reporting to the mayor, yes.
I'm sorry?
Reporting to the mayor, yes.
Who's reporting to the mayor?
The sub-departments.
Right, but I mean, you have, you have the mayor with, with the box. I mean, what does a box represent? The reason why I'm asking is, I mean, you're calling the Alderman's Office a sub-department, are we more than, are we, are we really a department? What are we?
And we don't, and we don't report to the mayor's office.
Right.
No, it doesn't say that.
You just said sub-departments report to the mayor's office.
The sub-departments in the ordinance that are green, not all sub-departments report to, are reported to the mayor's office. Nothing's changing with the Alderman's Office. They were previously called quasi-departments, historically. And then, when there was a contention with the language, we changed it to sub-departments. But if the question that I think I'm understanding is, nothing's changing with the Alderman's Office in terms of authority and who they're reporting to, nothing. The sub-departments within the code that's written, where it states which ones are becoming sub-departments, those are reporting to the mayor.
I'll let the legal weigh in.
I was just saying, the language of the, so the, the language of the ordinance, the different sub-departments, it actually states in there who they report to, so the, like, sub-departments delineated, the city clerk reports to the mayor, the Aurora Emergency Management reports to the mayor, the Office of the Alderman reports to the Rules Administration and Procedures Committee, the Office of Sustainability, blah, 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 reports to the mayor. So it is in the, in the language of the ordinance, it's very clear that who reports to the mayor and who doesn't report to the mayor, and the Office of the Alderman reports to RAP, if that answers the question.
And does it matter what we call the Office of the Alderman?
It's not a sub-department.
Well, I think previously, according to Mr. Beanstrad, in the previous legislation, they called it a quasi-department. So we changed it to call it a sub-department based on the size of it. If there's something you'd like to call it instead?
Would you rather call it just a department?
I think it's its own department.
And, and, just, just so I can, because I think I unders, maybe, maybe I understand my predecessor, but maybe not. But the way that, that this is divided up in the ordinance is, it's just, you have departments have certain rights and responsibilities, and they have sub-departments have certain rights and responsibilities. So, you know, the head of each sub-department shall possess purchasing authority, general supervision over assigned staff, may establish work rules, departments are, are treated a little differently. So I think that, I think that it's just, like, that, I, I mean, I don't know that it really, you know, if, if the nomenclature is a problem, we can probably fix it, but it might be its own entity then in order to, you know, we'd have to pull it out and put it into its own thing in order to make sure that it, it, you know.
Needs to be its own thing. The, the Alderman's, Alderman's Office and the Alderman need to be their own thing, because you're sitting here talking about sub-departments and, you know, they're, they're reporting to somebody, but then you're calling the Alderman's Office a sub-department. So the Alderman's Office and the Alderman themselves are completely separate from all this. So I don't care what you call it, it needs to be something different than a sub-department.
Well, if I can, maybe, I can explain, maybe I didn't explain it well.
Well, maybe, no, you're, you're, no, Nick, no, let me explain. You, you keep calling this a sub-department. You keep calling the Alderman's Office a sub-department, so that puts us all in the same place on this diagram as we are looking at it in front of our eyes. So the Alderman's Office is not a sub-department in, in the same way that you're calling the other sub-departments, sub-departments. So maybe we need to be a sub-sub-sub-department. It needs to be something different than the other sub-departments.
Well, the, the three things that I think are really important is that you have historically a quasi-department. We, quasi and sub are the same word. We chose sub because there were issues with quasi. So we're not changing that, you've always been a quasi-department historically. The second thing is, we are introducing other sub-departments, but in the code, it says, and legal shared this, where they specifically report to. Nothing's really, actually, nothing's been changed with yours other than a word. So we're talking about legitimate semantics. You are still the same, you have the same authority, you are not with the sub-departments, it's in the language. You were always a quasi-department, historically.
If I may, if I may, Mayor.
And there's, and just to be clear, there's a difference between the, the, I'm sorry.
Subdepartment, a subdepartment?
And no, no, there's a difference between the Office of Alderman, which is, you know, and the, the department, or the, the sub-department of, you know, Office of the Alderman, that, you know, that, it's, so, so I, I don't think there was any intent to limit your authority or anything that, that would be under the.
You can't.
Exactly.
It's not, it's not.
Exactly, and I don't think that was anyone's intent in drafting it.
And I don't think it is either, but I just think if we're going to do this, let's do it right.
Understood. I, I mean, I, I don't want to step on toes, and I know that this was drafted before I got here and stuff, but I think that, you know, to some extent, this is a little bit of semantics, but if it's, you know, if the semantics are going to be a major deal, I, I, I mean, I can see a way to redraft this, that's not.
Is there anything in particular that you would like it to say or motion you would like to put forward to change it?
Department, make it simple.
The other, the other part of that then, of course, would, would have it, and maybe this is why Rick made it a quasi-department, is it would also change and fall under the residency status as well, so.
May I explain that?
Well, last week, we changed our residency rules for department heads, so, but, you know, I would say that Rich is.
But, oh, I see what you mean, so in terms of how it applies to Rich.
Yeah, when, because you, you are officials, you fall under the residency already, but it would be, it would change it for.
I don't have a problem changing it to department. I don't know why Rick had it listed as a quasi-department, not, I'm guessing and speculating this to.
So just, Shannon Cameron, Chief of Staff, to provide some history on this.
What is your word?
Where's my what?
What is your word?
Um, sub-department is just what we had decided on from quasi. Rick did this so he could codify what was already in this legislation to give certain, and, and as you asked last time, Rich was like, asked, have you ever been able to do purchasing? Yes, no problem, but it was just so it was codified in the, and by you in the legislation. He wanted to make sure it was clear, so Rich had that authority. So that's why Rick decided to put it in this legislation this time around, because we were doing some restructuring, he wanted to make sure to codify that purchasing power and let him have that ability as the Alderman's Office. So that's why it's in there at all.
I think we just want to make sure that it's crystal clear that the Alderman's Office is not under the direction of the mayor's office. It is definitely a different, a different office, a different facility, a different, you know.
I think that the, the legislation lays out pretty clearly that the Alderman's Office and Chief of Staff reports to the RAP Committee Chair.
But that doesn't show in this, just, maybe I'm just putting too much into this graph and not enough.
So you want the, may I just ask, you want the RAP Committee shown on this?
I think it would be good if, I think if the, if the Alderman's Office is reporting to the RAP Committee, so perhaps that needs to be there.
So it sounds like the only suggestion is just to add the RAP Committee?
I think.
Okay.
On the graphic?
Yes. It's already clear in the legislation that it reports to RAP.
Mayor, if I, if I may, I mean.
Alderman Messiakos?
I think it just, it just continues to convolute that, if we put RAP on, on this organizational chart. I asked, where is the mayor in this whole thing too? Because right now, we are right next to the mayor in this organization chart. So if we're right next to the mayor, what legislation do we have for the mayor? And so if they're, for the mayor's office, and I would say pretty much mimic it for the Alderman's Office, very simple. Because right now, we're starting to talk about little things, it doesn't matter if we, if, if Rich lives in the city or not. We voted for Rich to be Chief of Staff right after we voted for residency requirements, okay, fine. We modified it as well a little while ago. We don't, I don't know how it affects in regards to salary grades and pay grades, et cetera, et cetera, and organizational structures. You know, what, what is the legislation that, that hovers over or for the mayor's office? And that's, and I'm sure it should be delineated somewhere, same thing for the Alderman's Office. I really have an issue with it being called sub. Words mean everything. It's not a sub, a sub-department, period. I understand that Rick was here and that's what he did. I understand that Rick was here and that's what he did. He tried his best, great. He's not here any longer, so he's not here to speak for himself. We do have a new legal counsel at this point. I think it matters to clear it up and not keep moving forward, especially for that one paragraph.
So, would you, do you have an amendment to call it something else?
Not right now. I mean, I, I would like for it, I mean, what, we kept it here for two weeks, right? So, we could get things.
This item is going on unfinished, as Nick pointed out, to work on some of the other language affiliated with the word equity.
Well, I'd love to see your legal counsel work on, work on something for us to review before city council meeting.
Okay, no problem. We did send this out to everybody right after. I will say, I'd love to have those questions if there's any sort of language that's a problem to the council, because we did change it from quasi to sub to meet that request. Happy to consider anything that you have once you see our legal counsel's suggestion on that, and I'll get you the legislation regarding the mayor's office. I'll send that over.
Real quick, is there consensus from the council that the word, changing subdepartment under the alderman's office to department?
Do you want to just return it back to quasi? That's what it was before.
Just the department.
You know.
Well, it's going to be put on unfinished.
Unfinished, I'm sorry, unfinished. Yeah, I, okay, so, so what, what I'll do is, because I know this is, this is being worked on now in my office, so I will try to come up with a new name. If you guys have ideas, though, they're welcome. But I'll, I'll pull out the Alderman, you know, Office of the Alderman separately, and we'll, you know, call it out separately. I'll circulate a draft, so.
Can I make a suggestion that maybe you look at other municipalities our size and see what their organizational chart says?
You would also have to probably look at a strong mayor, formal government?
Yeah.
So, a similar, strong mayor, formal government. And the, the duties of, of the mayor's office, well, I don't know where they fit in each one, but I can guarantee you they exist and I've read them. But I don't know where they fit with respect to this ordinance that we're trying to amend here today.
And then, a quick clarity, so I, I know we can move forward swiftly and with the right information. What exactly are we wanting to change? So, when we come back, we can, we can have those changes. We change the subdepartment based upon the recommendation from the council.
I think what we'll do is have the legal department come up with potential change and circulate it over to the alderman's office and try and hear back any feedback before next Tuesday, if we, if we could. I know, I know we also, we made, legal made some other changes in there, not only specify the, the flow and that it goes to RAP, but if, if, I think we sent a memo over that. If there's any other suggestions from that memo, too, we welcome those.
Yeah. The Office of the Alderman, the Office of the Alderman shall assist all the persons in the performance of their respective duties. As established by the law or ordinance, the chief of staff of the Office of the Alderman is the head of the office. The Office of the Alderman reports to the Rules Administration and Procedure Committee. So, the things I'm, I'm just making sure, the things I'm hearing are already in the language, so I'm slightly confused.
Yeah, so, so I have, I have an idea, so I'm gonna, I'll circulate it.
Okay.
Mayor Lash, can I?
Alderman Brown?
Yeah, I was just thinking about, you know, where, where we are now, right? So, you have departments that, that are, have divisions under them, right? So, the clerk is a division under the Law Department, EMA is a division under the Fire Department, and, and so forth, right? So, to me, the mayor's office is like a department with these as divisions. That me, that makes sense. That's what we know now. Why can't we just go with that?
And that's how we treat each of those heads as division heads?
I think maybe the, the solution is just calling at the Office of the Alderman, and you'll have your own section. Might need a new number, we'll figure it out, but, well, I'll, I'll circulate something.
Any other questions? So, this item will go on unfinished for the city council meeting.
I had a quick question. Alderman's office means the staff of Alderman's office or Alderman and the staff?
Alder, Alderman, your terms of office qualifications, compensation, powers, et cetera, are actually in a separate section of the ordinances? That's in division, that's two, that's in division, yeah, that's under city council. So, that's in Division two dash three, I think, or, sorry, I don't have it open. But it's in a separate, the Alderman as the office of, or, you know, in your official capacity is separate. This is for the, the staff and the office itself.
So, when we see this diagram, citizens of Aurora, city council, and it looks like city council has boards and commissions, mayor and alderman's office under it. Is that correct? Or?
Is the diagram correct?
In the diagram.
The, the boards and commissions technically, I guess, are liaison advisory boards that work for all of us. They make recommendations both the mayor's office and the council.
And that has always, that's been the case. That's not a part of our change.
But as far as a point, yeah. Nothing's changing on the boards and commissions yet.
Yeah.
And also, can we get the updated diagram attached to the Legistar? I think we have a different one.
Yeah, I agree. The one that's on Legistar is not this one. It's different. It's not the July fifteenth one.
So, we can just attach the whole PowerPoint?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I noticed that as well.
Thank you.
New business.
Twenty-five zero five six eight, a resolution approving the appointment of Stacy Peterson as Chief Financial Officer and City Treasurer. Not in COW.
Are there any questions on this consent?
Next item is twenty-five zero five six nine, a resolution approving the appointment of Jason Bauer as Director of Public Works and City Engineer.
Any questions from the council?
Mayor, was the previous resolution on consent, I didn't hear anything.
Yes, sorry, agenda two five, agenda item two-five zero five six eight will go on consent agenda.
Thank you.
For this agenda item, if there's no questions, agenda item two-five zero five six nine will also go on consent agenda.
All right, thank you, consent.
Next item is twenty-five zero five seven zero, resolution approving the appointment of Henry Thompson as Superintendent of Facilities Maintenance.
There's no further questions. Agenda item two-five zero five seven oh will go on the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, if he's here, can we get him to speak something?
Uh, yes, so this, this also will be discussed in executive session. If somebody changes their mind, can pull it from consent next, next council meeting. So, you'll have an opportunity to meet and ask questions. Okay, this brings us to the Alderman's Corner. Alderman Seville, Ward Six, will be presenting. And he needs the clicker.
I got a half hour, right?
And I got a hook.
Do you? Thanks. Okay. I'm happy to present the Alderman's Corner, and I, before I begin, I want to give a shout out to my aide, automatic aide, Crystal, for doing the heavy lifting on this and for working with me on this, so, thank you very much. So, we have the map of the Sixth Ward there, in the near west side of the community. And Aurora, Sixth Ward has three historic districts. The Riddle Highlands, Palace Historic District, and the Tanner District that I shared a little bit with the Fourth Ward Alderman and the Second Ward Alderman. But the Sixth Ward has the majority of the, of the area in that district. As what I mentioned earlier this evening, we have the Bull Ridge Water Main Replacement Project at three point two million dollars. This is my subdivision to the north of Sullivan Road. And Gail's Memorial Church, they were seeking to do an expansion of their parking lot. They're, they don't have a lot of off-street parking, and they approached me, and the Sixth Ward Fund gave them a small grant to participate in their project. They took down the house that they had already purchased and put in a new parking lot to the tune of thirteen new parking spaces. And the neighborhood is very appreciative of that because when the church has their events periodically throughout the weeks and months, it does take up a lot of parking, and this helps alleviate the off-street parking situation and allows the homeowners in the neighborhood to be able to utilize that with their friends and family. Traffic calming, the Sixth Ward is purchasing these traffic calming devices for, for the first time, mainly posting them around schools, St. Rita's School, and then Penn School on Illinois Avenue, Pennsylvania Avenue, and Old Indian Trail, and then a little bit on Elmer Drive as well. Seems to be working other wards, and we decided to try it here as well, to slow down traffic for the students that are walking and the parents that are dropping off their kids. The Ward Six, we host a cleanup every year. We had a very successful one, June twenty-first. We had three trucks located and filled them all up at McClary School. And we've been doing this for over twenty years now, and I like to say we're continuing to feng shui the Sixth Ward successfully because the amount of junk and trash is getting less every year because we're doing it every year. The neighbors think that's really a fine thing to offer for services for, for our Sixth Ward. We're having another scheduled shred event with the Fourth Ward and the Fifth Ward that we had to reschedule because of a scheduling issue. We're hosting that on the September twentieth at Jefferson Middle School from eight AM to eleven AM. Again, another fine service that we offer, our combined residence for the entire west side of town. Albright Park, Chet and Judy Albright Park was dedicated in my ward late last year. Chet was a former alderman in the Sixth Ward. He and Judy were very active in the community for decades. On this land that we're standing here at our dedication was, was a four unit that was unfortunately built in the sixties thanks to the upzoning that was disastrous in nineteen fifty-seven to allow that to occur. When I became an alderman, we were having a lot of criminal crime issues. In fact, there were over ninety-five calls for service by the time we purchased the property and demolished it. Now, of course, we don't have any of that. We purchased the house next door to expand it and make a little park at, park at park, and the neighborhood is very appreciative of our efforts, and everybody likes it, and it's safe and it's quiet, so it's a good thing all around. And the Sixth Ward helped fund that, as well as the City of Aurora. And State Representative, when she was State Representative, Lyna Chaplavilla donated fifty thousand dollars to that project as well, so it was a great partnership. Last year, last fall, we had the Bellagio Temple dedication for the new expansion, and we actually had forty thousand people in the Sixth Ward at, at that time, at that day. And Alderman Bade was attending, along with her husband, Vikram, and we had a great time, and it was a great event. And, and that helicopter, if you look closely, those red things being dropped from the helicopter are actually flowers, petals from the flowers that were dropping on us. So, it was a lot of fun. And I'm proud to represent the temple. I've been voting on behalf of the temple since nineteen eighty-five, when I was on the planning commission and city council, and it's a great asset to our community. Before, I'll give you a little history. Before this temple was built, if people wanted to worship a temple like the Bellagio Temple, they either, either had to go to LA or Pittsburgh. So, this was the first one in between. And we are continuing to develop the former Carsons, thanks to Representative, State Representative Barbara Hernandez. We were able to get the Secretary of State's office in the former Carson's building. That opened up in March. You can see the, the beauty of, of it right now that's adding to the luster of the Lake Street corridor. And in the background, in the lower right, is the new SUDS car wash that will be opening soon, hopefully by the, the summer. And it's, the overall development is going to be great. On the far left corner of the Secretary's State's office is an empty office space. It's actually been plumbed for a restaurant, so a restaurant's open anytime they decide to operate and open, and it's, it's ready to go. They don't have to do anything. The Redwood Development is the last development on farmland in the Sixth Ward that is occurring next to the Walgreens and the water tower on Indian Trail and Randall Road. The mayor and his staff were nice enough to attend the river cutting recently. It was a hot afternoon, but well worth the effort. Hundred eighty-six, two-bedroom, two-car garage rental community. The rents, some of them can go up to three thousand dollars a month, so it's a great asset to the Sixth Ward. Dunkin' Donuts opened up late last year. This used to be in the former Arby's Restaurant that opened up in the sixties, and the owner actually owns the Dunkin' Restaurant north, in North Aurora as well. So, he's expanding at eight oh nine North Lake Street. And the newest restaurants that's coming that's being rehabbed right now is the Corner Building at twelve eighteen North Lake Street, at Indian Trail and Lake Street, El Valle Artizo. It's a Mexican restaurant, seafood restaurant. Looking forward to that opening up. And the Aurora Historical Society hosted once again their event on, after the Fourth of July Parade. I urge all of you to, to try it, for those in the community that are listening that haven't yet. It's a great family event. We have the annual bell ringing, symbolizing the ringing of the Liberty Bell that kids loved to do, as you can see in one of the photos. There was a juggler, the American Legion Band played patriotic music. There was a petting zoo that the Sixth Ward sponsors every year. The kids love that food, and it was a lot of family fun. And a shout out to Alderwoman Garza and Alderman White that attended as well. We had a great time together. And we have our annual ukulele festival. This year, we had it once again at the Brown House, April twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. Actually, it was the most successful ukulele festival that they hosted. It was a two-day festival. Sunday, or Saturday was the all-day concerts where there's just music, and then Sunday was you could have or learn lessons and listen to concerts at the same time. And we plan on having that move forward again next year as well. And once again, the Sixth Ward gave another grant of a thousand dollars to the West Aurora Cemetery. This is the one between, historic one between Wilder and Lake Street. And the reason why we do that is because they're having some problems with their older trees, and we don't want them to be falling down and damaging the monuments and disrespecting the, the people that are buried there. And, oops, went too fast there. Oops. And Marie Wilkinson Food Pantry just did a major expansion. They recently received late last year one point eight million dollars in federal funding for an enlargement of their facilities, which including handicap accessible restrooms, increased food stores, storage shelving, and ruben for education and gatherings. And they also continue to have their garden that they grow food to distribute to their clients across the street that is owned by the City of Aurora, that the Sixth Ward has purchased over the years and combined with the City of Aurora. And I don't have recent harvest results, but these are the harvest results from twenty twenty-three. Over twelve thousand pounds of produce, hundred and ten thousand individuals served. We had deliveries of food to seniors, two thousand five hundred, and about eleven thousand, one hundred thirty-four pounds of food were distributed. So, we had, two years ago, three hundred and ten people actually volunteered for their harvest, harvesting and the gardening throughout the year, and it's a well worthwhile event for people. And once again, we're hosting our National Night Out in the Sixth Ward. Gail's Memorial Church is hosting again after a small sabbatical on Gillette. Northwest Territories is once again hosting it on Foreign Lane. And Randall West, in conjunction with the Fourth Ward, they'll be hosting up the National Night Out there as well. And the one on Monomoy, we are the only National Night Out that has horse and pony rides for the kids, so, just, just to let you know. And although this is not in the Sixth Ward, this is in the First Ward, I want to give a shout out to Representative, City Representative Barbara Hernandez and, and County Board Member Alex Arroyo. This was the pop-up for vehicle emission testing that there was at the, over the weekend, last week, and it was a great event. week, and it was a great event. And it wasn't advertised very well. In fact, when I went there, I was there at ten, ten minutes to eight in the morning, I was the only one there, I was shocked. And I zipped in and got my emission, emission testing, and I actually ordered my vehicle license for the next year. It was a one-stop shop, and I'm hoping we can expand it for next year and work in partnership with them. I think it's a great event, not, not having to drive all the way to Naperville and wait in line and do all that. This is really cool, so, a shout out to everybody that organized that. And these are the two guys that waited on me, so. Thank you, and I was happy to present this. Is it happy? Does it end?
Yes, it does.
Twenty-two seconds, I tell you.
Thank you, Alderman Seville.
Mayor, I think you just raised the bar.
We're in need of a closed session pursuant to the following sections of the Open Meeting Act. Section one twenty-two C one, to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee of the public body, and section one twenty-two C eleven, to discuss pending litigation, and section one twenty-two C twenty-one, to discuss closed session minutes of meetings lawfully closed under this act for the purpose of approval by the body of the minutes. Do I have a motion to enter into closed session? Therefore, adjourn this committee of the whole meeting with no further final action or public business to take place for the purpose of this meeting. Motion made by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderman Seville. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Nunez?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Benuellos?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug? Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Larson?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Ten yes, zero no.
Motion carries. No further business, we'll let the public clear out and go into executive session, then the meeting will be adjourned.